I'd like to call to order the work session for the City Council for the City of Wildwood for Tuesday, November 12, 2019. Ms. Sternley, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember McCune.
Here.
Councilmember Boe.
The President.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Edens.
Here.
Councilmember Bros.
Here.
Councilmember Garitano. Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan. Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Dillard. Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Councilmember Gagnani.
Here.
All right, thank you. For those of you that are in the audience, appreciate you being here. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device that is on, if you'd please turn it to silent while we are in session, I would appreciate it. Before we get to action items, it looks like under information, we have 10 items. Is there any item that any member of the council would like to inquire about or have a comment on? Councilmember Stevens?
For the salt purchase, Rick, I just had a couple of questions. So, I guess, one, how long has MoDOT been, do you know how long they've been using the product?
I don't know the specific time. I know they were using it last year, and in discussions at a meeting earlier this year, they indicated they were planning on using it again this year and have gone over exclusively for using it in the St. Louis district.
Okay.
That was my understanding.
And then they confirmed that they're actually getting the 30% or less passes, or I guess it's because it's a wet product, it doesn't bounce as far. That's what I'm reading. Is that correct? Is that...
I think that's definitely part of it from the way I understand it. They treat the salt, the rock salt, so it's not as inclined to bounce as much. It sounds kind of silly, but it's not inclined to bounce as much once it's dropped from the spreader and it stays in its place instead of going onto the shoulder or off the road where it doesn't help us at all.
Right. And then, I guess, did they feel like it really made that much of a savings? Though I guess is still my question, because like if it's based on the number of passes, are we still going to be, isn't the number of passes going to be more determined by the amount of snowfall versus, you know, the amount of times that they go over the road? Are they still going to go over the same amount? I guess is my question.
Well, clearly, you still have to cover and apply it to the roadway surface, but I think they're saying that when you apply it, you can use less since there's less waste of the product. So from that standpoint, it should be more effective. But when you read the literature, they talk about it having kind of residual value as well, and I'm not convinced of that, that that is true necessarily, but they do, they talk about the fact that it tends to carry over to the next storm event. So it is, there is an impact in subsequent storm events potentially.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions from any member of the council? Councilmember McCune?
I guess it's going to be Joe. It's just about the last item, the Wildwood Celebration Commission and the presentation of the budget. I just had some concerns reading through it, if you want to approach. Are we going to have a full discussion on it?
For action.
Okay, so I didn't know if we would have back and forth vote. I can wait. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, moving into action items. And my apology, I forgot to mention something under mayor comments. Based on my conversation this afternoon with City Attorney Young, we will not need an executive session. That assumes for the item that was originally planned. However, if anything comes up during the meeting, obviously, that needs a closed session. That could always occur, but in terms of the agenda item, without objection, we will not be having that. Moving into action items, we have two. The first one is the budget discussion. City Administrator Anslum.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council and the audience. Appreciate your time this evening. I would also like to acknowledge our City Treasurer, Steve Cross, and our Finance Officer, Don Kaiser, are in the back of the room as well. So if you have any questions of them, they are available, as are department heads. But as is practice with the City of Wildwood, I prepared a memo for the council for this evening's discussion, sort of going over an overview of the changes that have been made since the preliminary budget was presented to the council back in October, including some changes on the operating budget, some changes on the capital budget, and then finally, just some summary information on our salary plan and health insurance plan heading into next year. The information I provided to the mayor and council members included a summary of those changes to the operating budget, did not include the entire budget. That's still available for council review online in the Dropbox folder that our finance officer created. So you can refer that, back to that document as well throughout this discussion and be happy to answer any questions in that regard. But in short, we had heard some comments or some concerns about the preliminary budget in that it wasn't necessarily balanced when it was presented. So after hearing some of those comments, we went back to work and identified some line items for further reduction to present a balanced budget to the council. And at this point, I would be happy to turn it over for a discussion.
Okay, thank you. Does any member of the council have any questions or comments relative to the budget? And I guess before we get to that, Sam, what is it you are looking for, if anything, from the council at this point relative to a motion or action?
So after the discussion this evening, we would appreciate a motion to go ahead and prepare the enabling legislation to bring this to the council at our first meeting in December. Bill has to be read twice. We will also need to set a public hearing for that budget as well, so.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Gagnani?
A question for you, Sam. I mean, there's a lot of stuff on here, but there's one that got my attention. There's a, I don't know what page it's on. It says, "Changes to the original 2020 budget draft." Starts with police at the top, and then it works its way down here to town center. There's an $800,000 decrease. So there was an allocation, original proposed was $800,000. Is that the money that was slated to be used for the green?
Yes. You'll recall when the project was originally discussed, council authorized the planning and construction of that project all in the same fiscal year, and that really as time and conversation with review of the consultants moved along, we realized that was not going to be feasible. So we're planning next year, for the bulk of the next year, we'll be working with the consultant that council has approved to prepare the public meetings, the preliminary design, with the intent then of funding the construction of the town green in 2021.
Okay, so rather than leaving it in the budget as a, an item that's not going to be used, you're taking it out with the intention of putting it into the 2021 budget?
Yeah, in all practicality, it's going to be, it's not going to be until 2021 when we can see construction.
Yeah, it makes sense. Okay. I just wanted to be sure that that was the case. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Werther.
Quick question, Mr. Anslum. In the past, this council body has had the first reading of the budget for the next, for the next year at the first meeting, not first meeting, second meeting in November 25th. You stated you wanted it for the first meeting in December with two readings that night. Why the particular change?
That's right. You are correct. This is the first meeting in November. I apologize. Yes, the discussion will be tonight with the intent to have the first reading at our next council meeting, second reading, and final adoption of the budget in December. Thank you for that. Thanks for the clarification. You bet. Thanks for the question.
Any other questions? All right, would anyone like to make a motion? Councilmember Dodwell?
I move that we move forward with these changes to the 2020 budget as requested by the city administrator.
With the enabling legislation?
With the enabling legislation.
Seconded by Councilmember Bartoni. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We have one abstention, Councilmember Werther. Any other abstentions? Motion carries. Next item, Joe, Wildwood Celebration Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, my apologies to Councilmember McCune. I wasn't ignoring you. I just was trying to follow the agenda, so my apologies. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, the Wildwood Celebration Commission, under its enabling ordinance, is required to review the expenditures of those events each year, along with reviewing a budget, a proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year. 2020 is a very different year in many regards, as you just witnessed by the information provided to you by our city administrator, and the funding situation in association with many of our typical recreation events, work, infrastructure, et cetera. The Wildwood Celebration Commission did meet last week and was presented the expenditures from the 2019 events, both the Celebrate Wildwood event and the Art Festival event, and then also given the budget, in this case at $85,000 for both events for the upcoming fiscal year. It was explained to the members of the commission that in this particular year, latitude usually associated with that number, for the most part, did not exist, given budgetary considerations. Knowing that, and after discussing it for some period of time, the commission members did support the $85,000 amount for both the Celebrate Wildwood event and the Art Festival event in 2020. Therefore, tonight, the department is respectfully requesting the endorsement of this amount. So Mr. Anslum, our city administrator can, with some assurance, add it to the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joe, I don't know if you mentioned this in particularity, but the reason this process tonight is here, or this item is here, is because our ordinance that we've had on the books from day one actually requires it to be here.
Yes, this is an ordinance mandated approach to the approval of the funding. I would not normally bring something to the group, council, of this nature without first going to committee, but as I say, this is the process that's been established.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Councilmember McCune, you had wanted to, so do you want to speak now on this? Councilmember McCune?
So Joe, I just, my concern is, is that we're reducing the two large events that we have and giving these cuts of the budget. I guess what's going to suffer with the $85,000 than what we spend now? What are we pulling out of these events?
Well, as you can see by the table on page one of the report from the Wildwood Celebration Commission, when the events were held at a single time, meaning a single event that incorporated both of the events, we were able to manage it under $85,000. When we moved to two separate events, we doubled certain costs relating to staging, lighting, electric, restroom facilities, et cetera. So that is why we've kind of seen the jump. The conversation with the Wildwood Celebration Commission did focus on potentially making it a single event again in 2020, so as the budgetary situation wouldn't necessarily lead to too many cuts. We did not get into a very detailed or in-depth discussion of what might we change, but they are agreeable to the amount, which was the intent of the presentation by the department at that previously referenced meeting. So I can't give you a specific answer. The duplicity of the events, there's just costs we carry over that in a single event, we don't.
Do you feel that this is enough to satisfy, you know, it keeps growing and growing. Will it be a disappointment, or do you think this is enough to satisfy what we need for a joint event?
This time next year, hopefully, I'll be able to tell you.
Well, I know that, but I'm just saying, from what, everything that you've run into in the many years that we've, we've gone, costs have never went down for events. They continue to rise. But again, you've, were here when they were joint, and now we're bringing it up. I just, I had a lot of pushback from the residents that they're concerned because this is one of the big things that they do enjoy, and cutting, you know, social events for our residents is a concern.
Well, one of the discussions related to the barbecue bash and the expenditure that we're showing are indicating for 2020, and many on the commission that attended that meeting last week noted that maybe the barbecue bash might be a lesser event and have that sponsor take on more responsibility and use some of those funds to cover the two events that the city has. Again, assuming we stay with two events. The charge that they gave to the Department of Planning and Parks and Department Administration was, is to do that in-depth analysis and have it available to them after the first of the year, which is the intent. I wasn't trying to be funny, but I don't know, quite frankly, if $85,000 is enough. But in lieu of not having one of the events, which was also suggested, the thought of the larger majority of commission members was, let's try. We'll do the best we can, and certainly next year, we'll be able to answer those questions more completely.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out how they picked that number.
My recollection is, I would just add, my recollection from our discussions that we had relative to coming up with the budget that's before the council on this item, and correct me if I'm wrong, but some of the costs in this particular, on this particular item are actually not resident-based or resident-focused. They're sort of what I would call behind-the-scenes things, like meal tickets, free meal tickets that we have historically given out fairly liberally, and maybe we cut back on those a little. So that's not a, that's not a resident thing, and that was just one line item. Is that a correct recollection?
We've always covered the cost of a meal for the police. In this case, waste connections for the individuals there, the electrician that's on site during the day or at the Art Festival the two days. Certainly, there's ways to par the budget and not impact the quality of the event. Again, but we've always tried to be as hospitable as possible, those that support the event, and you can certainly find different ways to do that.
Okay. I think that's helpful.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yeah, so it's $85,000 per event?
Both events.
And there's going to be a decision made after the first of the year as to whether they combine them or not?
That's the direction we're heading. Once the commission members are provided the more detailed accounting of each component of the event and the costs associated with those components, I think the next step we'll take as the commission and Department of Planning personnel is to look at those and say, can that be reduced? Can that be eliminated? Then look at the bottom-line numbers for both events, and if the bottom-line number isn't in the vicinity of $85,000, then we have to have the conversation about a single-day event.
We've had, we've had them both combined in the past, and it's worked really well. So I don't see any reason we can't combine them.
Up until 2018, they were a combined event. We got pushback from the art community, not in a bad way, that just when they're trying to sell art during an event that has bounce houses, stilt walkers, face painters, et cetera, it's not the atmosphere that they are typically used to and not conducive to selling art. But we're looking at a couple of options just in terms of location strategy, so that there's really two separate events, and the linkage may be the stage and the food court area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dodwell?
Thank you, Joe, for what you just said, because one of my concerns has been, while I'm certainly dedicated to ensuring that we celebrate the formation of Wildwood, I know in the past years, when we've tried to do that at the end of August, it's been bloody, bloody, bloody hot, and we don't see the turnout to those events because it is so hot. And while I realize that's the date that we did finalize our paperwork with St. Louis County, I would be very much for combining the two events in October, when the weather's a little bit more pleasant. We have more guarantees that there won't be potentially rain. Now I say that, it nixes, curse us now. But I think by combining the events and doing as you and the commission have already stated, somehow causing a separation. If Clayton can hold an art festival, but then have a whole area for the kids to play around in, I think Wildwood can get creative in that and save on our resources and make it an even more special event.
I think the commission echoed that same goal.
Councilmember Edens?
Actually, you answered my question with Councilmember McCutcheon's, which was if they were separated because of the type of buying crowd that you were hoping to attract. And so, I'm good.
Okay. Joe, I think you're wanting a motion to approve the specific budget.
Just endorsement of the recommended $85,000 amount by the Wildwood Celebration Commission.
Okay. Would any member of the council like to make that motion? Maybe Councilmember Farmer, they're second to the motion. Seconded by Councilmember McCutcheon. Any discussion on the motion to approve the budget as presented by the Wildwood Celebration Commission? Seeing no discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Opposed, we have Councilmember Gagnani, Councilmember Werther. Any other opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. So that takes us to miscellaneous...
Excuse me, point of order on this.
Sorry, Councilmember Bartoni?
I know that you had said that we weren't going to go into closed session, but City Attorney Young and I had a conversation earlier today, and it's regarding something on the regular agenda, Bill 2510. And I'll just ask the city attorney, is this something that I, what you explained to me today, can you do that in an open room, or do we need to go into closed session to, for you to discuss that with this group?
That would be an appropriate closed session item.
Can I make a motion that we go?
You can.
Would it be appropriate to do that now?
It would.
Or wait till after? Okay, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session.
Seconded by Councilmember McCune. Any discussion on the motion to go into closed session? This will be a roll call vote. Seeing no discussion, Ms. Sternley, please call the roll to go into closed session.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McCune?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Bros?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Gagnani?
Yes.
Okay. We will go into closed session and return for the remainder of the work session.
So are you going to use a golden shovel to throw it in the dirt?
I can find it.
I drank a lot of it, so I end up.
You know, there's a thing going on.
Yeah, we're scheduled. We're scheduled.
Okay, it's on the agenda. It's on the agenda. And we see this.
Okay. Yeah, that's not, um, that's not, not permanently anything like that. That's, that's way, way down.
So what example is it saying?
I'd have to look at it to see if it, it's not to prove anything on the town center.
Okay.
For sure.
It's not to prove that NORFAT did because.
Well, it may be.
Because he came back and said that.
Oh.
The town center update committee said yes and no. We can, we haven't made any final decisions yet. We discussed that.
Um, I'd have to ask Joe. I can't remember what that does. Ask Joe.
I can remember.
Okay. Okay, um, council members continuing to miscellaneous. We have one item which is board and commission meetings from council member Remy. Council member Remy.
With permission, I'd love to just postpone this to the next meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion to postpone the item to the next meeting. Is there a second to the motion to postpone? Seconded by council member Edens. Is there any discussion on the motion to postpone? See no discussion? All in favor of the motion to postpone, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, that takes us to adjournment. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Maybe council member McCune, seconded by council member Brost. Nondebatable. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So we stand adjourned from the work session. We'll convene the, um, main meeting in six minutes at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Yeah, seems like twice. It's like. People won't have fair much to do, I guess. I don't know. I don't think we're that exciting. The sack was thin. Oh, here's for the. Maybe they could hammer these. Right. I've been getting a few down breakings or. Yeah.
Do you know where to get them?
I do. I used to make them. Honestly, all you do is go get like a little, there's two different shovels. You know, there's one with a post and one with a handle. You know, if you want to paint based on the weather, how to get the one with the post. There's kind of a stain on it. You just get the old paint, the breaking. That's all we ever did. You can get a nice one, it's like. Sure. I'll make one if you want. Pretty easy. I mean, honestly, you just like hose it down and it's done. Throw on a couple coats and it's pretty. Looks like a little thing. Um, yeah, I'll make you one. Do you need one? Who goes? Me? Yeah, I mean normally, I mean we've done it a couple different ways. Sometimes you do it wherever you shovel from. You do more than just one shovel. Especially when it's frozen.
Yeah.
Everybody tries to get it in there. Or it's just more for a picture anyways.
Yeah. Kathy said they were going to try to.
I don't know. That would be, I mean, it's pretty cool. The other thing we've done actually, which maybe would be better is, um, just fill like a little box that was two by four. Just fill it with like dirt from your home people. And then it looks real official like you do that.
I don't know. Kathy just said they were gonna sell it. Like they typically do.
Cause it's like right at the road, right? Okay. Is there an info file?
No, there's been a.
I haven't seen it yet. Yeah. But I didn't.
Paul.
Right. Yeah. It wasn't here yet, so he might.
So it's for, what's the like real age range for the kids group?
It's toddlers, preschoolers, kindergartners.
So up to five? Five or six?
Seven year olds.
I can answer.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the city council for the city of Wildwood for Tuesday, November 12th, 2019. Um, Mr. Mlinger, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember McCune.
Here.
Councilmember Bo.
Present.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Remy.
Present.
Councilmember Edens.
Here.
Councilmember Brost.
Here.
Councilmember Garrettano. Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan. Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Dillard. Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Councilmember Greg Noni.
Here.
All right, thank you. And thanks to all of you that are with us this evening in the audience. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device that is on, if you would be so kind as to turn it to silent while we are in the meeting, we would appreciate it. And for those of you who are comfortably able, if you would please stand with us to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And moving next to minutes from the last council work session and regular meeting. If there are any questions, we could entertain those. Otherwise, I would ask for a motion to approve those. Made by council member Greg Noni. Your motion? I think I saw councilmember McCutcheon's hand first, so you're seconding the motion to approve? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Any discussion on the motion? See no discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Moving next to public participation, just want to mention a few things about that. Anyone who wishes to speak must complete a speaker card and provide it to the city clerk who is seated to your left of the podium. When your name is called, please approach the podium and state your name and your ward. To ensure that all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so, there is a five minute time limitation and I will let you know when the time limit is reached. If you have any questions for us, please mention that during your remarks and identify the official you would like to respond. That official will make note of it and at the conclusion of public participation, any official who chooses to respond will have three minutes to do so as to all questions directed to that official. The official may choose to respond to your questions after tonight's meeting and we may also post any responses to the city council page of our website. And please be, finally, please be respectful to others and making your remarks, interrupting others and using profane and abusive language are prohibited. And I want to thank everyone in advance for following these. And Jean, I just want to make sure there's room for people to get through if they walk through over there. So, all right? Okay, great. All right, first speaker card, please.
Karen Hufden, Ward two.
Hi, I'm requesting a second reading tonight's meeting. Oh, on, um, 17020 Kennedy Crossing, um, it's a boundary adjustment.
Madam Clerk, do you know what bill that is? Okay, Bill 2523. Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Tim Werther, Ward seven.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, you know, earlier this evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members and residents that were present, you heard some discussion regarding the 2020 budget. And in particular, I'd like to go ahead. Talk about what we face here in the city of Wildwood for 2020. In particular, there are two items that were recently highlighted in the memo provided by our city administrator, James Anslum. It talks about, let me get this a little closer. Make that a little larger. Perfect. Thank you so much. I can read those items if people can't. What, those two items in particular, the first item speaks to a reduction in the city council budget of a little more than $7,000 regarding, and how's that being accomplished? Through the elimination of a shredding and recycling event that we've had annually for a number of years. The other item is a reduction of the, of $16,000 through the elimination of the Wildwood calendar. Also a very popular item for the residents. So my concern, and what I'm bringing forward to council here, there are other items that are listed. Almost all departments, all portions of the budget were scrutinized and reduced, resulting essentially in fewer services for the residents in 2020 and beyond. There's one thing that has not been considered though. And that's the salaries that are paid to us as elected officials, members of council and the mayor. So the question I have to council members, are you willing to address your salary to help residents have a consistent level of services? And provide for events that they are used to having? Give you some numbers. Provide some numbers for this regard. This would basically, what I'm thinking about, and I think we should consider is reduction in the mayor and council salaries by half. That'd be a reduction in the mayor's salary from $10,000 down to $5,000 per year. Council reduction from 2,000, 200 per council meeting to $100 per council meeting. This would approximate a savings of nearly $42,000 in a year. Certainly enough to fund both that document shredding and recycling event as well as the Wildwood calendar and still leave money left over to address some of the things that perhaps council member McCune brought up a little bit earlier. So what I'm asking everybody here to consider. Oops, that's part of it. Let's try to dot this. Yeah. It's later tonight, I'll make a motion under miscellaneous to place two parts of our municipal code on the agenda to have the salaries reduced, both for the mayor and city council. That's sections 110.040 for the mayor and 110.110 for the city council. The whole purpose of this is to reduce our salaries in order to maintain the current level of services that our residents have come to know and expect and to not shortchange them going further. So I hope you will join me in that when that opportunity comes up. But also I've asked the question to mayors and council, are you willing to step forward and do that? I look forward to your answer.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
That was last speaker card.
Okay. Councilor Werther, were you looking for, literally that, you're asking a question for tonight or for the debate later? I just need to know, to know how to apply the rule.
Go ahead and ask, answer the questions you like.
Okay, so. I understand that. So does any member of the council wish to address that question at this point? Councilor Greg Noni.
The numbers that Mr. Werther gave you were the original numbers at the council.
had, as you know, were changed about three and a half years ago. There was some opposition to changing those numbers at that time, as I recall, sitting out here in the audience, and some of us old timers, myself included in that list, were opposed to increasing the number.
It's answering the question under the rule, so.
I am answering the question.
Okay.
The question is, I'm absolutely in favor of his suggestion, and I think it sends the money back to the people that accounts the most, and that's our citizens. You know, I know we work a lot of hours at meetings, I understand that, but I think we owe it back to our citizens.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Remmy.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yeah, I would reduce the salaries, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next speaker card, please.
There are no more speaker cards.
All right. Moving next to mayor announcements and appointments, every year at this time, we look back and reflect on people who have served our city either in an elective or an appointed capacity and who have passed. And this year, unfortunately, we've had two who did terrific work for our city, former councilmember Ray Manten and Larry Thompson. And so their relatives are here with us tonight, and I'm going to present them with a plaque and just a token of our appreciation here in a second. And then when I return, I'm going to ask that all of those who are comfortably able engage in a moment of silence out of respect for them. So if the families would please approach to the front, I would appreciate it.
I also want to say thank you very much. I know where you're located now, mine is down on the, and we're happy to see you. Thank you. Love. Thank you. Thank you.
So again, out of respect for Mr. Thompson and Mr. Manten, whose service that they gave to our city, I would ask that all who are comfortably able to stand, and let's have a moment of silence in their memory. Thank you. And thank you again for being here this evening. Okay, next, under appointments, we have two. The first, to the Historic Preservation Commission, I provided the council with a memo regarding Mr. Chad Adams. I don't think he was able to be with us this evening due to scheduling conflict. So you have my memo. He is certainly interested in serving and is a trustee of one of our largest subdivisions. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve his appointment to the HPC. May I have a councilmember Brost, is there a second? Ward one, continues the Ward one position on HPC. Thank you. Councilmember Greg Noni, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the appointment, motion to approve the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving next to Mr. Jeff Jensen, who is being appointed to replace the individual who, the other Mr. Jensen, who resigned from the watershed erosion task force. If there are any questions with respect to him, I'd be happy to entertain those. Otherwise, I would ask for a motion to approve his appointment. May I have a councilmember Stevens, second by councilmember McCutcheon, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, and we have no public hearings this evening, so we're going to move into our bills and the readings of those, and we have one second reading and several first readings. The first and only second reading is Bill 2510, is before the council for final passage, and it concerns Ward Two, is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? May I have a councilmember Bartoni, second by councilmember Dodwell. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Mleminger, please read Bill 2510.
Bill 2510, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, imposing a temporary moratorium on the development of certain property during the pendency of a study of review of regulations and standards for development of such properties and other matters relating thereto.
Thank you. Joe, do you have anything you'd like to add to the information relating to Bill 2510?
No, sir, but the city attorney and I are available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion or questions relative to Bill 2510? Councilmember Bartoni.
My only comment on this today is, I know there was an article.
Is your microphone on?
My only comment would be, I know there was an article in the Post-Dispatch today that was very misleading, and I just, you know, want to make the comment that I think it's pretty disappointing that articles like that are being written and a lot of unnecessary angst, I guess, within the city, and hopefully a little bit more due diligence and professionalism in the future will prevent those types of articles from being written.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens.
I'd like to make an amendment on Section Five, that, where it says that the moratorium is temporary, effective for 12 months unless dissolved earlier by the city council, and make an amendment to move that to two-thirds of the city council.
My suggestion would to have it retained as is.
I didn't know if it was kind of redundant because it's currently a PRD, and the PRD requires two-thirds vote now, but I just wanted to make sure that the language was in there to, you know, that it would still require two-thirds vote if it was going to be dissolved. Is that the case, being that it's a two-thirds vote for PRDs at this time?
It has nothing to do with the PRDs. The moratorium doesn't.
Okay, so, so, okay. Half the council plus one could dissolve it earlier under the current language.
Correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would note, under that same section, it does note that the moratorium may be extended by ordinance of the city council, thereby requiring only nine.
That's correct. And so certainly, the council's approval of this, just to be clear and to follow up with councilmember Bartoni's comment, is not to grant approval to build on the site. It is, in fact, to do investigation that may lead to further investigation if it's needed at the end of the moratorium.
I think the hope of the department is, is that both the federal and state governments step forward and give us clear and concise answers to the questions that have been asked by many elected officials in the city of Wildwood now for approximately 20 years.
Thank you. Councilmember Remmy.
I'll just say one thing in regards to this and in support of the moratorium. You'll hear this a lot tonight, our primary responsibility as council members first and foremost is to protect our citizens. That's never going to be in question. We're going to continue to maintain safety for all of our citizens, including on potential sites that have dangers to people, and we'll continue that. So I'll support this moratorium as we go forward.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, Ms. Mleminger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2510.
Councilmember Stevens.
No.
Councilmember McKeon.
Yes.
Councilmember Boe.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Remmy.
Yes.
Councilmember Edens.
Yes.
Councilmember Brost.
Yes.
Councilmember Garrettano.
Yes.
Councilmember Werther.
Aye.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni.
Yes.
Bill passes. Moving into first readings, Bill 2519 is before the council, and it concerns all wards, is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by councilmember Edens, second by councilmember Dodwell. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Mleminger, please read Bill 2519.
Bill 2519, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the city of Wildwood to negotiate and execute certain public roads, right-of-ways, and park maintenance agreements on behalf of the city of Wildwood with certain contractors for public roads, right-of-ways, and park maintenance within the city of Wildwood.
Thank you. Rick, do you have anything you'd like to add to the information the council's been provided relative to the bill?
I have nothing additional, Mr. Mayor, but I'm available for any questions or comments.
All right, any questions or comments? Councilmember Stevens.
What's the process that you use for, basically, just holding the contractors accountable when it comes to their time and materials rates and hourly charges?
Well, certainly, we are on, we have staff available to review their work, and we generally do our best to keep tabs on our contractors, so that's the role of the public work staff when we have that kind of work going on. Not all work is billed out in that manner, but there certainly are some occasions where that is the case, but it generally falls back to staff to review and inspect and hold them accountable.
And do they, like, clock in and clock out, or check in and check out, like, when jobs start and finish, or I'm just curious of the process?
No, it generally falls back to Scott Hummel, or again, staff to monitor their progress, and we usually are in communication with them on a daily basis, so we're aware of when they show up and when they're done and how many man-hours are worked, but there's no formal clock in or clock out process that occurs.
Any further questions? All right, seeing none, Bill 2519 will be on the agenda for the next council meeting. Moving to Bill 2520, is before the council for first reading, and it concerns Ward Eight, is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? May I have a councilmember Garrettano, second by councilmember Stevens. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Mleminger, please read Bill 2520.
Bill 2520, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, accepting certain streets within Camberry subdivision, plat three, within the city of Wildwood for public use and maintenance by the city.
Thank you. Rick, anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2520?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, but again, I'm available for any questions or comments.
Councilmember Edens.
Would you like a second reading?
If that's the council's desire, I will say that Monday or last, yesterday, we were out on roads treating them for salt and, actually treating them for snow, so we went ahead and addressed this subdivision last night. So from that perspective, it would be timely if we went forward with the.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion for second reading, made by councilmember Edens, second by councilmember Garrettano. This would be a two-thirds vote requirement. Is there any discussion on the motion for second reading? All right, we'll do a voice vote and see where that goes, if we need to do a roll call or something different we can. All in favor of the motion for second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion for second reading passes. Ms. Mleminger, please read Bill 2520.
Bill 2520, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, accepting certain streets within Camberry subdivision, plat three, within the city of Wildwood for public use and maintenance by the city.
Rick, anything further?
No, sir, but again, we're available for any questions.
All right. Seeing no questions, comments, Bill 2520 is before the council for final passage. Ms. Mleminger, please call the roll for final passage of the bill.
Councilmember McKeon.
Yes.
Councilmember Boe.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Remmy.
Yes.
Councilmember Edens.
Yes.
Councilmember Brost.
Yes.
Councilmember Garrettano.
Yes.
Councilmember Werther.
Aye.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Okay, Bill 2520 passes. Moving to Bill 2521, it's before the council for first reading, and it also concerns Ward Eight, is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by councilmember Stevens, second by councilmember Garrettano. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Mleminger, please read Bill 2521.
Bill 2521, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, accepting certain streets within the manners of the Meadows of Cherry Hills subdivision within the city of Wildwood for public use and maintenance by the city.
Thank you. Rick, do you have anything you'd like to add to the information that you've provided to the council relative to Bill 2521?
No, sir, but following the same logic, the department would certainly be receptive to a second reading. Again, we did treat the main road in the subdivision for snow removal yesterday.
Okay, we have a motion for second reading, made by councilmember Stevens, second by councilmember Remmy. Again, two-thirds vote. Any discussion on the motion for second reading? Seeing none, we'll try a voice vote. All in favor of the motion for second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing no abstentions, or opposed, the motion carries. Ms. Mleminger, please read Bill 2521.
Bill 2521, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, accepting certain streets within the manners at the Meadows of Cherry Hills subdivision within the city of Wildwood for public use and maintenance by the city.
Anything further, Rick?
No, sir, but again, available for any questions.
All right, any questions for Rick or any comments on the bill? Seeing none, Ms. Mleminger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2521.
Councilmember Boe.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Remmy.
Yes.
Councilmember Edens.
Yes.
Councilmember Brost.
Yes.
Councilmember Garrettano.
Yes.
Councilmember Werther.
Aye.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon.
Thank you. Moving to Bill 2522, it's before the council for first reading, and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by councilmember Dodwell, second by councilmember McCutcheon. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Mleminger, please read Bill 2522.
Bill 2522, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the purchase of up to 1,000 tons of Clear Lane Enhanced De-icer from Cargill Incorporated for winter snow removal and de-icing operations.
Rick, anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2522?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, again, along the lines of the preceding two bills, I would like to ask for a double reading on this one, as we are in the winter weather season apparently already.
Okay, we have a motion for second reading, made by councilmember McKeon, second by councilmember Bertolino. Any discussion on the motion for second reading? Two-thirds vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Ms. Mleminger, please read Bill 2522.
Bill 2522, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the purchase of up to 1,000 tons of Clear Lane Enhanced De-icer from Cargill Incorporated for winter snow removal and de-icing operations.
Anything further, Rick?
No, sir, but again, I'm available for any questions regarding this matter.
Councilmember Stevens.
I'm curious, what are the metrics that you're going to use to determine whether this was going to be worth it this year versus other years?
Well, that's a good question and something we've been given some thought, a little bit of thought. of thought on. When we use it, we're going to be cognizant of the routes we use it on and have some sections where we don't use it for comparative sake, to be clear that we can tell that there is a more effective treatment going on, and perhaps try to be consistent with that from storm to storm. So I haven't really identified exactly where those roads or routes would be, but we would definitely like to get a clear picture coming out of this, that it is more effective or it does provide benefits. The, one of the primary benefits in my mind is the low weather, the low temperature ability to treat roads with it, so I would expect that that would be fairly easy to determine, hopefully. When we get real cold weather, we'll be sure to use it and keep an eye on the effectiveness. Yeah.
Counselor McKeon?
I just want to say from the committee, we did, you did a great job in presenting this, and I think that it's needed for the city of Wildwood. It's safer, it doesn't break down the road, so just a good job on the department's part for researching this and trying to step out of the co-op. I think that's a good initiative that Wildwood's trying to do, so thank you, Mr. Brown, for doing that.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Counselor Gagnani?
Yeah, you said this was a salt that was treated with a solution, is that correct?
Yeah, it's a rock salt, it's a rock salt that's been treated by Cargill and enhanced.
Do you have to store this in a separate location from the regular salt?
We do have to make sure we store it in our salt storage facility undercover, and that's what we plan to do, and yes, we will. Scott Hummel, our street superintendent, tells me that he can store it in a manner that we can keep it segregated from the remainder of the salt.
So we're not going to have to have additional storage areas?
No, sir.
Okay.
Counselor Bartoni, did I see your hand? All right. Seeing nothing further, I think we passed the motion for second reading. Okay, so please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2522.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Gagnani?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Thank you. Bill passes. Moving next to Bill 2523, it's before the council for first reading, and it concerns Ward 1. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Gagnani, second by Councilmember Brost. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Malinger, please read Bill 2523.
Bill 2523, an ordinance authorizing the adjustment of certain common boundary lines between two parcels of ground known as lots 3 and 4 of the Lafayette Crossing subdivision, plat book 361, page 39 of St. Louis County records, both being located in the southeast quarter of section 35, township 45 north, range 3 east of the 5th Principal Meridian. City of Wildwood, St. Louis County, Missouri are more specifically situated on the west side of State Route 109, south of Clayton Road, at the terminus of Kennedy Crossing Court, thereby exchanging 345 square feet equally between these adjoining properties to correct a structure setback encroachment matter.
Thank you. Joe, anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2523?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as noted in the title of the bill, this particular boundary adjustment involves a single property line that is being shifted, so to speak, to the north by the existing single-family dwelling, and then correspondingly shifting it shifted to the south on its westernmost terminus. The total amount of area affected by the boundary adjustment on these two 3-acre lots is 345 square feet. I would note that during public participation, representative approached and requested a second reading.
Thank you. Counselor Remy?
Yes, I was going to move to have a second reading in for Ms. Houghton.
Okay. If we can, just before we get to that, let's see if there are any questions for Joe or comments. Councilmember Bartoni? Well, for questions?
My only question was, is the department okay with the second reading?
Yes, sir, and thank you for asking.
Counselor Gagnani?
Yes, I assume that one of the property owners was here asking for the second reading, and everybody's agreeable on this, which is this is a necessary item for the, to avoid a conflict, is that correct?
The northernmost lot, which is identified as adjusted lot 3, is still owned by the original developer, Claymont Development, and the owner of that lot is in agreement. The owner of the lot that the encroachment has occurred upon is in agreement, and I believe there is a closing or some type of refinancing associated with this, which is driving the request.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure that there were no conflicts that we didn't know about.
Not to my knowledge.
And I'm in favor of the, I don't know, somebody seconded Dr. Remy's motion, but I'll second the motion for a second reading.
The benefit of our plating process is all owners of record have to sign, and then any lien holders as well, so when the plat finally arrives at City Hall, we know that all the participants have agreed, and a notary has identified them as being the appropriate people to sign the plat.
Okay, so did we have a second already for the, who was the second, to the motion for second reading?
Dr. Gagnani.
Okay. Two-thirds vote is required, we'll try a voice vote and see where it goes. All in favor of the motion for second reading, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion for second reading passes. Mr. Malinger, please read Bill 2523.
Bill 2523, an ordinance authorizing the adjustment of certain common boundary lines between two parcels of ground known as lots 3 and 4 of the Lafayette Crossing subdivision, plat book 361, page 39 of the St. Louis County records, both being located in the southeast quarter of section 35, township 45 north, range 3 east of the 5th Principal Meridian. City of Wildwood, St. Louis County, Missouri are more specifically situated on the west side of State Route 109, south of Clayton Road, at the terminus of Kennedy Crossing Court, thereby exchanging 345 square feet equally between these adjoining properties to correct the structure setback encroachment matter.
Okay. Anything further, Joe?
No, sir, but the department would be glad to answer any questions or respond to comments.
Okay. I don't think we had any earlier, so I'm assuming you don't have any now. Thank you, though. Mr. Malinger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2523.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Gagnani?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Okay, bill passes. Moving next to Bill 2524, it's before the council for first reading, and it concerns Ward 6. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Boe, second by Councilmember Gagnani. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Malinger, please read Bill 2524.
Bill 2524, an ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute real estate purchase and sales agreement with Glencoe Community Church of God, Inc., for the acquisition of certain property under the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program as administered by Missouri State Emergency Management Agency within the city of Wildwood.
Thank you. Rick, anything you'd like to say relative to Bill 2524?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, but again, the department is available for any questions or comments.
Any questions for it? Counselor McKeon?
So I guess my question is, is we're talking about budget restraints or constraints, and there's two bills tonight. This one's for 39, 250, and we have another one that's in the 20s. I just don't understand how we're purchasing this when we have budget issues. So I'm just a little concerned, and what's the purpose behind or what are our plans for that?
Well, these are two flooded properties. They both flooded in both the 2015 and the 2017 floods, so we did put in for grant monies through FEMA under their Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, and we were successful getting those funds. So what we're proposing is to acquire them under that program, and it is a cost-share program, so our amount, our obligation is 25% of the overall cost. The remaining 3/4, 75% is covered by FEMA. So from that perspective, it's a good, a good thing for the city. Again, these are the two structures that got flooded, both the 2015 and the 2017 flood on the Merrimack.
I guess what is the benefit for the city, though? If we're going to spend the amount that you're saying, it is a good deal, I get it, if you look at it a real estate thing, but why are we spending that money if we have budget issues?
To remove two flooded properties that are, that are no longer able to be inhabited, they're vacant at the moment, so under the program, we would buy them and demolish both of them, and they would be open space in perpetuity. It's consistent with the other properties in the Glencoe area that we've acquired over the years that have been flooded previously. You may recall, we purchased one last, well, we purchased two last year, I believe, down there as well.
I guess just my concern is, is that we're talking to how bad the budget is right now or that we're really trying to squeeze the budget, so I just have a problem this year with this kind of money. So that's my comment on it, and thanks for answering that.
I understand. These are, just to be clear, these were budgeted for in our capital projects fund for 2019, so these are not unanticipated expenses.
Counselor Gagnani?
Yeah, a couple of questions and a comment. Are these adjacent to some of the park areas we already own down there?
That's, that's correct.
So they're contiguous, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and that's one question, and the comment is, we've had some issues with parking down in Glencoe, and having this additional property attached to the adjacent property, as he's just indicated that we have, would be a very big boon, and for $39,000, that's pretty reasonable. I think, I think that's of great benefit to the city of Wildwood, and since it's already budgeted money, even I would agree with that.
Seeing nothing further, Bill 2524 will be on the agenda for the next council meeting. Moving to Bill 2525, it's before the council for first reading, concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Dodwell. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Boe. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Counselor Werther abstains. Any other abstentions? Mr. Malinger, please read Bill 2525.
Bill 2525, an ordinance by the city council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri that authorizes the addition of a new section 415.610 to chapter 415 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Wildwood zoning ordinance to accommodate small cell technology deployments in the city's public right-of-way areas for other locations and other locations within the city of Wildwood, such being consistent with recent state statutes in the same regard, and also reflecting the letter of recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission that is dated October 21, 2019 on this matter.
Joe, anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2525?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, a public hearing was held on this particular matter two weeks ago. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the city council authorized the preparation of the appropriate legislation for the purposes of small cell technology deployments in the city of Wildwood.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, the bill will be on the council's agenda for its next meeting. Moving to Bill 2526, it's before the council for first reading, and it concerns Ward 8. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Garitano, second by Councilmember Stevens. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Malinger, please read Bill 2526.
Bill 2526, an ordinance by the city council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri authorizing the mayor of the city of Wildwood, Missouri to execute a contract on behalf of its, with Human Nature, Inc., for its development of an environmental analysis regarding the subject six, the subject 6-acre property, a public input process to obtain resident input, and then a concept plan identifying a design concept for the site's future use, consistent with the attached contracts and exhibits, which was the recommendation of the Planning and Parks Committee of City Council from its October 15, 2019 meeting.
Thank you. Joe, anything you'd like to mention relative to this bill?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the matter regarding this particular firm and a contract with this firm for the Village Green area was presented to the Planning and Parks Committee on October 15 of this year. The Planning and Parks Committee did make recommendation regarding Human Nature Incorporated. That recommendation was presented to city council two weeks ago, and at the conclusion of that discussion by city council, it authorized the preparation of this legislation.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Counselor Gagnani?
Yeah, the $90,000, either Joey or you or Sam can answer this one, I guess. The $90,000 was budgeted separately from the $800,000, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So this is already set up for this particular purpose?
Yes, the discussion was held at the conclusion of 2018. There was an acknowledgement that having both design, planning and design money and construction money in the same fiscal year might be difficult. It has proven as difficult as anticipated.
Okay, that's fine, thanks.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other questions? Counselor Stevens?
And when are they gonna, like, once the bill pass, when are they planning on getting started on this process, so?
The passage of the bill will hopefully be at the end of November. We'll exchange all the paperwork, contracts, and we hope to have them start with no delays at the first of the new year.
Okay. And then the final report, if it, even if it takes the full timeline, nine months, like, does that still not leave us any time at all to get started on a Phase 1 or anything for construction when it comes to using the 6 acres next door?
It's an excellent question, and a question that was asked by the Planning and Parks Committee during its discussion on this matter, and what I would say is, the proposal as presented will provide us a conception, a concept plan based upon public input. That concept plan then has to be turned into a engineered set of drawings and bid specifications, That concept plan then has to be turned into a engineered set of drawings and bid specifications, and then the bidding process, and then finally, presentation of the recommended bid to City Council for legislation. The assumption is, is that will take the remainder of 2020, and we'll be in a perfect position in 2021, if funded, to proceed forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
All right. Bill will be on the council's next agenda. Moving lastly to Bill 2527, it's before the council for first reading, and it concerns Ward 6. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Pope. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Werther. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Sternlinger, please read Bill 2527.
Bill 2527, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute real estate purchase and sales agreement with Bernard A. Elmer for the acquisition of certain property under the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program as administered by the Missouri State Emergency Management Agency within the city of Wildwood.
Thank you. Rick, anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2527?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, again, this is the second property that we are proposing to acquire, that the owners have agreed to a price on. And it's also through the same Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, so our cost for 25%. The federal government will pick up the other 75%. And I'm opposed for any questions or comments.
Any questions or comments for Rick? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Rick. That'll be on the agenda. The bill will be, 2527 will be on the council's next meeting agenda. Finally, moving into, or next, I'm sorry, moving into resolutions, Resolution 2017-37 is before the council. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2017-37? Councilmember Remy.
Can I speak on it?
You can.
So, last evening, Councilmember Garitano, myself, and Administrator Ansem had the privilege to meet with the mayor of Ellisville, Mike Romerman, to discuss our concerns about the location of this growth and dispensary for marijuana less than a property line, a property line less than 1,000 feet from the Ellisville Elementary School. And we had a collegial conversation. And although we are steadfast on our resolve, we would like to afford our friends and neighbors to the east, who are gonna have a work session next Wednesday, to first and foremost, find potentially an equitable solution. And so, therefore, I'm requesting a two-week postponement pending after that meeting. So, hopefully, we can come to that equitable solution.
Okay, so we have, that's a motion. I take it to postpone. Is there a second to the motion? Second by Councilmember McHune. Any discussion on the motion to postpone for two weeks? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to postpone, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion to postpone carries. Moving next into miscellaneous, receipt and file, we have three. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, the first item under receipt and filing for tonight's meeting relates to an existing telecommunications tower that is located on Joe's way north of Valley Road. This particular tower was passed by resolution of City Council in 1998. A condition of that granting and approval was annual renewals. The tower has been inspected, has been reviewed and recommended for the extension by the Planning and Zoning Commission. As with any conditional use permit, though, the City Council has the right to exercise its power of review. That review must be exercised in the next 15 days.
Thank you. Any questions for Joe? Next, I'm sorry, Councilmember Edens.
In the attachment, it's the fourth picture, if you count the two plants together horizontally as one picture. So, it's a fence line. I noticed in the attachment, it discussed the plant replacements that have been suggested were growing well. I was just wondering why I don't see plants continuing around all sides of the fence?
The intent of the original requirement was to screen the structure with landscaping from the adjoining private road. The remaining side is a single property owned by the lease O to the lease E. So, the thought was, is the owner is allowing this to happen through a lease agreement. And so, we were just-
They're okay with it?
Very much so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, next, Joe?
The next two items were items presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission and for, tonight are for information purposes only. These items will eventually be forwarded to City Council for consideration and action.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Joe on either of those?
Thank you.
All right. Next, domestic abuse seminar. Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yeah, thank you for giving me the time this evening to discuss this topic. I attended the domestic workshop for the cities a few weeks ago. And domestic violence occurs across all genders, social and nemical lines, and in all neighborhoods and across the United States. There are many aspects to domestic violence. It's not just a physical act. Domestic violence includes emotional, psychological, and verbal abuse. Battered Women Syndrome includes all aspects of this at the same time. Violence begets violence, and often, children who have witnessed domestic violence become offenders as adults, and thus perpetuating a cycle. Children are traumatized by the violence, which reviews, which rewires their brain development and negatively impacts the rest of their lives. Victims of domestic violence need protection under the law. A domestic violence state statute exists. Area cities have domestic violence ordinances, and some cities' law enforcement officers have been trained specifically in responding to domestic disturbances. So, I move that the city of Wildwood prepare legislation to adopt a domestic violence ordinance.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember McCutcheon that we move to adopt a domestic violence ordinance, and that is seconded by Councilmember Werther. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember McHune.
Can you explain that? Why would we adopt an ordinance when St. Louis County has, I guess, a misdemeanor or ways to charge people with domestic violence already? And it's kind of a misdemeanor versus a local ordinance? Because when you go local, it's not as, it's brought through the local court versus where county can, I guess, take a hold of it as a misdemeanor account. And I think that the captain can comment on that. I think you got a stronger case from the county's standpoint than the local. So, I would say, no, don't do that, because it just gives them a smack on their hands. That's my take on it, just from the police. And I'd love the captain to explain that to you. But I would not encourage a local ordinance.
According to the discussion that was had at the workshop, there are different-
Levels.
Levels that you do go through when a case like this occurs. But having a local ordinance enhances the correction, sanction, sanction, as it goes forward through the different court processes. And it is basically, it's just, it's reinforcing the fact that we do not condone physical and domestic violence, and that we are in agreement with our state statute. We've made resolutions for other topics in the same manner, in the same form. So, I just think that we should reinforce that the city of Wildwood does not condone domestic violence in any form.
Counselor McHune.
So, I think we can make a public statement, and I think that we all agree on the dais that that's important. And I think that we all don't support that. And I know I don't. But I just want to caution this council, is that when you minimize or come to a local government level, from like a domestic assault fourth degree, which is something new, I'm telling you, they get booked, and they get released, and it's a smack on their hand. And then you're just adding one little layer to say, oops, you're a bad person, don't do it again. But if the county runs it through the county's courts, it's a misdemeanor, and they don't get the smack on the hand, don't do that again. It's a little bit heavier, and it's, and county has that put into place, that the bonds can be higher, they can hold them. There's just so much more punishment from that level than a local level. And if the captain can come up here just to kind of comment on that, I think that it might help explain what I'm trying to state. But I think a public statement from the councils needed. We don't condone it. We support it. But again, I don't encourage a local ordinance. And if that's okay, if he can explain the different levels from prosecution, Mayor, if you allow it, I think that's valid.
Well, what I was, what I was gonna suggest maybe is that, given the importance of the topic, and what I'm hearing is several issues floating around, is if maybe this was put before one of our committees that I can work with you on to decide, and then for a report back to the council, once it gathers information from the captain and others. Would there be any objection to doing that? I think that would be a logical spot for it, without any disagreement from the council. Councilmember McCutcheon, your motion, so I don't want to-
I want to stand with my motion. I don't really see any-
Okay.
Any reason to redirect it.
Okay.
I think they made it very clear at the workshop that it is important for agents, for cities to have ordinances and support them. And typically, given research, they get a slap on the hand, no matter which jurisdiction that it is in.
Okay. So, the motion is on the floor. I have you on the table, Councilmember Werther.
Thank you. I appreciate where Councilmember McHune's coming from. However, I think this matter, really, and quite frankly, doesn't deserve just a committee discussion. It deserves a full council discussion. That's why I support it, quite frankly. I think it's important enough for all of us to talk through this, to understand it better. And to Councilmember McHune's point, I think it'd also give the captain the opportunity to get his information together and bring that forward, so that we can discuss this thoroughly at a future work session. So, I appreciate that.
Okay, I'm not speaking for or against referral or placement of the committee, but the committee would come before the council. Councilmember McHune.
So, can I make a motion to refer, then?
You can make a motion to refer. You making that motion?
No.
To, let's get the motion on the table before you can second it. Okay, so, motion to refer to Board of Public Safety, seconded by Councilmember Stevens. So, the motion on the floor now is the motion to refer. Discussion on the motion to refer. Councilmember Edens.
Before I decide on the motion to refer, would it be okay to ask Captain Mundell to answer a couple of questions?
Sure. Captain, would you like to come forward?
What I'm wondering is if adding an additional ordinance could in any way increase the fine, or this, you know, hopefully not a slap on the wrist, hopefully, potentially jail time, and still go through the county court system? Because I know there's plenty of laws out there where you can violate both state and federal simultaneously. So, can you talk a little bit more about how that works?
And we're gonna see if he can do that. It may be a question actually for a city prosecutor.
Well, it just affects whether or not I think we can do it now as a council versus-
Right, I'm just, I'm not sure. We're gonna give him a chance to answer, but if you can't, I'm just saying, we understand, because it may be a city prosecutor answer. Go ahead, Captain.
First of all, I appreciate Mr. Werther giving me an opportunity to do a little research, because it is a little bit complex. It's not up to the police how a case is prosecuted. So, we go with the most serious crime that we see, and it would be presented, as Ms. McHune said, to the state prosecutor. What happens there is up to the prosecutor. So, if it's a felony, that's easy, they're gonna charge that. They have the option of charging misdemeanors. A lot of times, they will not charge a misdemeanor. So, it might be a good idea to have a safety net in place at the municipal level, that a case could be prosecuted at the municipal level as a misdemeanor also.
Okay.
Beyond that, as far as defining, you know, as Ms. McHune said, they have added other misdemeanor laws at the state level. It really is up to the prosecutor to decide how they want to proceed with.
So, this has the potential to be a backup in case we see the county almost failing to properly address something? So, that's a little bit of a different take. But I do understand what you're saying. So, maybe some more information would be helpful, because I think that we, our goal up here is pretty much the same with every council member. So, it's just a matter of what the best way to really put some strong teeth in something is. So, thank you.
Anything else, Mayor? I think that's it. Councilmember Remy. Thank you so much, Captain. Councilmember, did you have a question for the captain? Okay, Captain, I'm, no, okay. You're good. Let's go ahead. Councilmember Remy.
So, Ms. McHune, a quick question for you. Would you be amenable to not referring it to public safety, but having the prosecutor and Captain Mundell next meeting at the work session, as the Councilmember Werther had mentioned? And in the interim, perhaps, we can work on crafting a bill? But it would just be in its infancy, but at least as a council, we can at least query our prosecutor on this. So, we're not referring it to public safety. We're moving it to the next public work session.
Captain, will that give you enough time?
Yep.
I will amend.
Well, you, we can't do it that way. So, since you made the motion-
No, you're right. It's a refer.
So, since you made the motion to refer, it's in the possession of the council. So, unless there is a majority, I'm sorry, unless there is unanimous agreement that the motion be withdrawn, it would need to stay. So, is there any objection to the motion to refer being withdrawn? Councilmember Stevens.
Point of order, Councilmember Remy basically is just making an amendment to the motion that was seconded to refer it to work session instead of Board of Public Safety, correct?
Um, you can't amend a motion to refer by a motion to postpone, which is what his is, because a motion to refer trumps a motion to postpone. Sorry.
Okay.
So, where I was, is that the council would need to approve by unanimous consent the withdrawal of the motion to refer. Is there any objection to withdrawal of the motion to refer? Seeing no objection, we're now back at the main motion. And at this point, we can vote on the motion or any other related motion. Can you make, Councilmember Bartoni, thank you for your patience.
So, my only question, and maybe this question is for our prosecutor, but I was gonna ask our city attorney, Young, do you see any negative impact for the city having this ordinance? Because if it is a safety net, I mean, we've all heard these horror stories that repeat, you know, abuse, and, you know, that's why they have to have these seminars, you know? And otherwise, we would be in a much better world. So, is there a negative impact to having an ordinance?
Without specifically having researched the issue in preparation for this evening, the only issue is if the city, if the penalty provided for under state law allows a municipal court to have jurisdiction over that particular offense, I don't see a problem with it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Edens.
Procedurally, if it's with blessing, is it, can I amend the motion on the floor to move it to work session?
It wouldn't be an amendment. It would be a motion that stands on its own. So, you can make that motion if you wish.
I would like to make that motion, just based on what I heard from Captain Mundell.
So, we have a motion to postpone the item, the motion that was made by Councilmember McCutcheon to the next work session of the council.
Correct.
Second by Councilmember Remy. So, it's a motion to postpone the main motion to the next work session of the council.
With more information to be provided.
For more information to be provided. Any discussion on the motion to postpone? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the motion to postpone, please say aye. Any opposed? We have one opposed, Councilmember McCutcheon. Any other opposed? Any abstentions? So, the motion to postpone carries, and it'll be on the work session for the next council meeting. Councilmember Werther, you mentioned something you wanted to say in a miscellaneous.
Yes. Following up on my comments earlier during public participation, I'm putting forward a motion to place on our agenda revisions to the Wildwood Municipal Code, Sections 110.040 and 110.110. The purpose, as I stated earlier, was to reduce the salary of the mayor and the council members by half from their current levels, so that resident services can be restored, as I detailed earlier, to the 2020 budget.
So, this item was addressed relatively recently in 2016. I think that that is something, we have a committee specifically designed for Admin Public Works, and so, I'm gonna ask them to put that on the agenda.
I'll raise my objection to moving this to any committee. My intentions were clear, and I'd like to have the motion seconded and voted upon.
If the council wanted to do that, which would be a motion to place it on the agenda for the full council, it can do that. As I said, I think that, given the history and what we've done procedurally previously, and the fact that this was recently done, and we have a committee specifically set forth for that purpose, that would be my decision pending any other action. Councilmember Edens, did you, did that answer your question, or did you?
I still have another question, but it can-
Can we have a second, please?
Be answered.
Okay, I'm sorry. You did make the motion? Were you making that motion, Councilmember Werther?
I did.
Okay, so, we have a motion that it be placed on the agenda for the full council meeting. Is there a second? We have a second by Councilmember Gregg Noddy.
So, may I?
Sure. Councilmember Edens.
I would just like to know, before I make a decision, how we compare in salary rates to other cities? I don't know if it's appropriate to ask. I see a council member of a different city here tonight. I know that we need to take into account that we have an unusually large council, and therefore, it's reasonable to have less salaries compared to other cities. So, I'm not sure if it's on the next council meeting, would information be provided, or would that only be available at a work session?
So, the, it could be done either way. But the fact is, when this was looked at just in the last few years, that very set of data was examined, and it was extensive, and it gets very involved. And so, to do it properly, we have a committee for that purpose, and that would be the kind of data that I would expect could be analyzed out in that process, rather than trying to do it on the fly here.
Well, the reason, the reason why I ask is I'm wondering if we self-select for candidates that do not necessarily represent the population.
That's another issue.
So, can I, can I continue?
Sorry.
Oh, it's okay. All right. So, for most of us up here, a lot of us have advanced degrees and salaries, and so, this isn't something that makes a difference in our life. And so, I'm not necessarily opposed to what Councilmember Werther suggested. It's certainly worth talking about. When I, when I kind of look up at the makeup of the council, you know, there's, I'm considerably the youngest person here. We have absolutely no minorities on council, and we do have an underrepresentation of women. You know, we make about $4,800 a year, and certainly, no one's in it for the money. What I'm, what I'm thinking of is individuals that are five years younger than me, or roughly five years older, that are graduating with significant student debt. This actually makes a difference in a loan payment or not. And it could self-select candidates, because they may be willing to take another part-time job, rather than coming up here and working. And so, I would just like some more information about whether or not, how we compare in terms of reasonability. And I realize it's been done before, but CPI has changed, perhaps, there's been other raises. So, I'm not, I'm not opposed to this. I just have concerns. When I, for example, when I look at several friends that are public teachers, they roughly spend the equivalent of this salary on additional supplies for the classroom. So, even though it doesn't make a difference for us necessarily to have a salary, it could for somebody else that may not be willing to spend the time, or at least not lose money. I think the goal for most of us here is to not lose money. For example, salaries can cover costs of an electric- For example, salaries can cover costs of an election. I know when I go to a municipal league conference, I don't charge the city for my hotel rates, or gas mileage, or things like that. I know I have additional printing costs and things I spend money on, and it, it's, again, it's not that I'm opposed to it, I just want to make sure I make an educated decision, because for someone else, it may make the difference between running and not. And I'm worried that we're not getting candidates that represent all of the economic strata that live in our city.
So, I just want to make sure we don't get into debate on this.
I'm sorry, this is part of my, this is my thought process and my request for, I think we're just self-selecting for wealthy individuals, maybe not wealthy. I just need more info.
So the issue is where we're going to place this, and I'm suggesting it go to committee, because that's why we have it. But just FYI, that very issue was raised. Yes, it was. Councilmember Bartoni?
I wasn't there for that, so I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to approve moving this back to the committee, but here's why. Not because I'm opposed to the salary issue, but we pushed back to Sam and the, and the department heads to really work over this budget. As you recall, the first budget was presented was a deficit budget, okay? And I personally went to Sam and pushed back and said, you really can't put that deficit budget, in my opinion, before the council. You have to present a balanced budget, and let the council then decide whether it wants to have deficit spending or not, okay? That shouldn't be something that the staff has to come up with, that's our decision. So, Sam and the group did an excellent job going back, reworking the budget, came up with some $400,000 worth of cuts, including the annual calendar and so on, so forth, okay? I think that now puts it, this sheet of paper that they produced, puts it back in our lap to say, yes, we agree with those cuts, or no, we don't agree with those cuts, okay? And maybe go back and find some other ways to massage the budget. Just jumping on the salary issue, I think, is kind of myopic. It's targeting one approach to the budget issue, without looking at all of the budget issue. So I'd be opposed to this, but if you dig in the archives, you know I voted against the salary raise three years ago, okay? But since then, I've also heard the argument that Councilmember Edens just brought forward, so it could go either way.
So you're making the motion to refer?
Yes.
So we have a motion to refer to Admin Public Works, is that where you want it?
Yes.
An agreement? Okay. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember, okay. I need a second to the motion before we get in. Second by Councilmember Garitano. Councilmember, I actually have Councilmember Garitano next. Did you want to say anything? This is only on the motion to refer.
Yes, absolutely. I believe that bringing it back to the committee would be the right place to do it. The committee has worked with the city staff regarding the budget, and so if there are concerns, as we heard tonight from Mr. Werther about the calendar, then maybe we can find something that we can switch, and we can get the calendars. But I understand, if I recall, and again, we're talking about the motion, so the calendar may still be there, but it's just a change in how it's delivered. So I do support sending it back to the committee. The committee has looked at these types of issues before. In fact, the committee just looked at several salaries of people that work for the city that hadn't gotten raises in over 10 years. So I think that's the right place for us to debate it.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yeah. The last time this came up for debate, we had a special committee, and so when you all were bouncing back and forth through our committee and referring, I was wondering which committee we were specifically talking about. But our other committee did extensive research, and it was set up for just that purpose.
Correct. This would be to Admin Public Works. Okay. All in favor of the motion to refer, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show of hands for opposed. Councilmember Werther, Councilmember Greg Nonny, Councilmember Remy, and Councilmember Stevens. Abstentions? Motion carries to refer. Thank you. Next is to adjournment, unless anyone has anything else they'd like to mention? All right. And again, I want to thank the families for being here this evening. That was great to see them and to honor their loved ones. And thanks to all of you. Okay. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Sure. Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yeah. We are having a Ward Five meeting this Thursday, November the 14th, at 7:00 a.m. here in City Council Chambers.
Groundbreaking ceremony this Saturday for Ward Five Park, 10:00 a.m., weather permitting, I assume? Okay. Rain or shine. We are, Ward Five works off, okay? Rain or shine, 10:00 o'clock on Saturday morning. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further? I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Made by Councilmember Dodwell. Seconded by Councilmember Farmer. Non-debatable. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion to adjourn carries. Thank you.